Our meetings will, I'll ask if we stand and how have invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. May we found an attitude of prayer.
Gracious heavenly father, we say thank you for this beautiful day in Washington County. Thank you for the opportunity to go out into our communities and meet with our citizens and Lord may we serve the public, may we honor you through all that's said and done and Lord just bless our time here this evening, give us civility and direction and guidance and patience and love for one another. We just pray that everyone has a good evening and a safe travels home. We ask these things in your son's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
With that, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order and commissioners reports and comments. Commissioner Harvey, you want to go first this evening? There you go.
We're glad to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to be here in the citizens of Morgansville area and it's not only to be out here and engage with people and yesterday night we gave us the Morgansville Volunteer Fire Department and their award ceremony and there are some really tremendous volunteers there doing a lot of hard work and committing a lot of their time to help this community. So we're very thankful for what they do.
Yeah, go ahead. You got the mic.
Good evening. Good to be here. I want to, I see some of my Freedom Hills contingency is here, which is always makes me feel right at home. But I live down the street, it's a pretty easy trip for me. Tonight's the night to ask any questions you have. We have a lot of staff here. I want to thank the staff for being here and all branches of our government. I want to thank Morgansville Rural Tan for inviting us here. It's always a pleasant evening and thank you all for your hospitality. I appreciate it.
Fine. You want to go next?
Sir, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I too, over the past couple of weeks, attended several of our company banquets. I attended one in Clear Spring two weeks ago, attended part of Morgansville, their banquet last Saturday, and I went down and visited with Boonsborough for their banquet for their 195th year of service to the community. That was before Lincoln and Washington. Lot of years of service to that community. So special note, thanks for all that they've done. I did attend a nap, Washington County Day in Annapolis last Wednesday. We had a lot of praise for Washington County and we showcased the best of Washington County in our reception later that night. And I also want to thank Morgansville for another beautiful breakfast. I heard 747 people. 700 seems to be the average, but it's more than a breakfast. It's community gathering, watching folks meet every month, sit around, talk, enjoy the fellowship and good food, and we have captain of the gravy train setting back there, so always greeting at dinner line. So special thanks to Morgansville for that breakfast and for having us here tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Good evening, folks again, and it's always good to be in Morgansville. I think historically you win the prize for the best turnout of many of the municipalities that we go out and meet with on their turf. So and tonight is no exception as I can see. And you stole my thunder, Commissioner Klein, but if you want the best breakfast in Washington County, it's come to Morgansville and
Well, there's three this Saturday coming up.
You know, and I too, I've nicknamed him the gravy man, so we always have a good time. So and we appreciate all the hard work and I know that's quite a feat, to feed seven, eight, nine hundred people on a Saturday morning. So keep up the good work. We appreciate it. With that, Mayor Marty Loom, you want to?
The gravy man. Bob Walton, he's also the mayor of Morgansville.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, I didn't realize that. I thought you were, I thought you were the mayor.
Anyhow, greeting city county commissioners and staff, you'll need to stay as you start asking questions. Understand with all these people and get the pie and address and things like that. But we appreciate your coming. Basically because you're not required to be here, but you come anyhow. We told you many years ago that we try to have thirty or forty people here and fresh ones in the back. So you need to finish here tonight, please. Take some of the questions with you. In the crowd tonight with us, I'd like to recognize our president and the pink shirt back here, Chuck Cunningham. Ben Eversole. Our blood treasure, Dwayne Arch. Dwayne handles all of our money and tonight he's going to handle the microphone. So if anybody wants to talk, Dwayne's going to find you and give you the microphone so that everybody can understand and hear your questions. And if the commissioners will pass around, we only have two mics and afford the third one. But if you'll pass that microphone back forth so everybody can hear. And oh, I want to thank Michelle Preve for setting this all up. She's the one that coordinated all this. So thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. You want to call Rose or just? Okay, we do. Thank you. We do have a sign up list. So Denise Hose.
Thank you for coming this evening. And my question is concerning the property on the corner of Garthview Drive and Syracuse Pike that was a rancher for the longest time, and it looks now like it's turned into some sort of a business. And my question is, is it zone residential? Is it zone business? And what is it? You know, nobody seems to know. That's my question.
Jill, you want to?
I already filled this a little bit.
Oh, did you? Okay, you want to take it or let Jill finish?
Yeah, well, yes, Jill, Jill will try to answer and follow up for me. I spoke to Jill about this evening. So give it back to Jill.
Hi, I'm Jill Baker. I am the director of the Department of Planning and zoning for the county. This is just now that brought my attention. I'm not really sure what's going on down there, but I believe we'll go out and investigate and we'll get back to you.
Okay. Bob Walton. Mr. Gravy.
I don't know why they asked me to talk about the sewer, but I'm going to ask about that. It's my favorite. When the sewer was installed in Morgansville community in the 1980s, there was a quarterly fee of eighty, sixty-four fifty Morgansville Sanitary District charged. Attached to the residents' water bill at this time, till the debt was repaid, which it was many years ago, someone stated at this meeting last year that the fee would disappear soon, but that it hasn't happened yet. Is there any update on that topic?
That would be great. I need one breath from the director of garbage management. Yes, I told you that last year. It is going to happen, but unfortunately the contractor is behind on schedule. The date we have now for the flow transfer is first week of May. The reason we picked that date, that's when the city quarter ends. They will be reading the water meters first week of May. And then the city will be sending you your final sure bill from the city in May. And there'll also be a letter in that letter explaining that the future billing will be coming from the county. So the following quarter will not have that service charge in it.
Very much. Thank you all for coming.
Okay. Karina Parsons.
And with every elementary school in Washington County, the pickup here line here in the afternoon of Morgans Elementary is long. Creates a traffic stop at the Morgans Avenue entrance exit. Anything you tell them to improve the safety.
Do you settle on the transfer?
Good evening. Scott House, Director of Engineering. We work closely with County Public Schools in regards to county roads adjacent to schools. So we took a look at it today for a bit, and we're going to talk to WCPS about it and see if there's anything else they can do internally in their roads and how it relates to the intersection out here. So I have this down. We're going to take a look at it and talk with them here this week.
Ms. Parsons, did you want to announce, make a request about that blood donor? Did you, do you want to say it now? Yeah, why don't you do that? And we have it on the record too, and commissioners will hear it. Thank you.
We have a gentleman that comes here to donate blood. In 2009, he was recognized for giving 25 gallons of blood. And this year he has accomplished, he tells me 35 gallons. The red cross says 36 gallons. No matter which it is, it's a huge amount and that helps many, many people. And we at the Rural County would like to recognize and wonder if the county commissioners would also like to join us that evening, which is March the 19th.
We'll get some information from yours and it's on, okay. Thank you.
Proclamation point.
Yeah, we'll send, we'll send.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Parsons, Barb Jacob.
Thank you all for coming this evening. I probably have an answer for this question. I've been told, but I live on Morgansville Road, been there since 68. And in the past, I'm going to say two years, every day I can count at least 25 tractor trailers that go by my home. They come off show, watch the road. Some of them will stop. They think this is residential. I don't know what they think, but they back up holding up traffic because it's a busy room. And I was wondering what that's all about. You don't know? You don't know? Why there's so many trucks on Morgansville Road?
We don't really know anything definitive, other than there's really been no constructed, constructive, I'm sorry, construction activity in the area. Martin's elevator has always been there. They've been a major generator of truck traffic on that road, but we're not aware of anything that would have changed to create additional truck traffic. We can have our Department of Engineering take a look and see if anything has changed.
Something that would look good.
Yeah, I was told it's like a building supply because trucks go down empty. They come back with building supplies on. Basically what it is, selling for filthy supplies. You don't know?
We don't know. We're going to have engineering and planning go out and take a look to see if anything has changed.
It's been two years, say, from now. You know, okay.
No problem. We'll have staff go out and take a look.
Okay, thanks, Barb. James Cole.
Good evening. Thank you for coming here this evening. My name is James Coyle. I live in Guard Spa here in Morgansville. And many years, it's been a very, very quiet place. However, about a week and a half ago, we had someone who decided to take a joyride through all of our backyards. And the individual was apprehended and I'd like to compliment the sheriff's deputies who responded. They were courteous and they were diligent in following up with us. So after the sensitive got me wondering, as far as the rate of crime in Morgansville, we get any sense of where that is?
I'll need to follow up with our sheriff's department and get that information.
Okay. Steve Hose.
He's got a quick question. Over here on Oliver Drive, now that we have Burger King, Community Rescue, the Microtel, and now the Winehouse, is there any thought about revisiting the random about that that intersection with Morgans Avenue? I know at one time that was into planning, but it was kind of dropped. Is there any reconsideration for putting that back in again? Thank you.
Yes, I'll take this one again. When it comes to the development, we deal with levels of service. So it's capacity, it's delays at intersections. There's more in the office that are done with different criteria when it comes to intersections. So we look at those first. But when it comes to future development, right now, any future developments that plans to access Charlie Drive requires the relocation of Charlie Drive, intersection of Charlie Drive and Label Lane, and intersection improvements at Oliver Drive and Morgans Avenue. We, there was a talk about around about years ago with Charlie Drive and Labeling to accommodate additional lane of the intersection for future development to the south end of Labeling. So there's a lot of different intersections involved. But right now Oliver Drive meets the levels of service with the work to the north. And but to the south, any future development that comes, and it's really dealing with the state, how close the interchange ramps are, and then dealing with the intersection. So there's a combination of trying to deal with that and getting any future development that comes on. And we've had four or five different developers in the last year or so come in and say, what's it going to take for us to develop some of the parcels there along ID1? We've said that traffic needs to be dealt with in that area. So if you want to follow up with me afterwards, I could kind of share the math and kind of talk with you through a lot of different intersections.
Okay. Ben Eversole.
Yes, my name is Ben Eversole, and we recently got a letter stating that our local bank, the Bolton Bank of the Street, is going to be closing. I and a lot of my community members are concerned of what may, who may buy it and who may move in there. And I was wondering, there's anything the county could do to try and not allow dispensaries to be in the area of Morgansville?
At this point, the state of Maryland has usurped a bit of our authority in dealing with the cannabis industry itself. What I can tell you at this point is that as far as dispensaries go, we have been issued, the county has been issued three additional standard dispensary licenses in addition to the one that exists out on Basil Boulevard. Right now, the companies that got those licenses are kind of tight lipped about it. But we know of one that is pretty keen on the old Family Diner out on Valley Mall Drive, right behind the Ollies there, which is a family diner. Pretty positive that's going to be a dispensary. We're hearing rumors that Charpsburg Pike, that they're roaming down around there looking for sites. And then I've heard some rumors about circling around Pennsylvania Avenue. A pretty long stretch, so I don't know what portion of Pennsylvania Avenue you're necessarily looking at. But when it comes to the dispensaries, the county authority in terms of location and setbacks, other dispensaries and things have pretty much been usurped by the state.
Excuse me, Jill. What's the distance between the schools and the dispensers? Do you remember?
Uh, I believe it's a thousand feet.
Thousand feet, I thought.
Very far.
It's a thousand feet or not. It's more than a thousand.
On this, you have to contact a little bit. They're looking mainly around the area where Innovates is. It's a swirly wild, uh, general. Oh, right there. So that building across from Innovative has a vacant room in it, and that's the one that at least one of the licensed holders has been looking at. And Jill is correct, that one by the mall is most likely going to be a district cannabis one. And they're the one that is already a grower on Western Town Parkway. And so they're actually expanding into full circle. They'll grow it, process it, and sell it. Yeah, we're a little different to the whole industry too. They do improve buildings pretty well. But we are following the state guidelines online that Jill doesn't have any more power so than that. So. And then there's one license holder that's basically running around looking for something. We don't know where they're going yet. So we know about basically the location of two, and one Charpsburg Pike is going to be on Hartnett Drive most likely. Just to give you guys a better idea where they're going. But there's one wild card. We have no idea where they're going. And again, Jill is correct, they're very tight lipped, and they're not really working on the county disclaimer efforts to try it.
Okay, Robert Mothershed.
Hello. While I was eating pancakes Saturday, I was told y'all were going to be here. And I started thinking about what am I going to talk about? I thought the three things, but it looks like I might be limited to one. The big thing is, is big trucks in Morgansville. I live on Village Mill Drive and Hurst Lane. In my backyard is Hurst Lane and Morgansville Road. So I've got two corners. And for years I've been replacing split rail fences that I put up to keep people from driving through my yard and taking down two rose bushes in either corner. I can tell you, the trucks that are coming through Morgansville looking for building supplies are going to that site over there on the railroad tracks. They come in with empty flatbeds and leave with loads of wood, and they don't care where they drive to get there. I've caught people with their rear wheels of their trailer up against my rose bush. And if I didn't come running out of the house yelling and screaming, I'm sure he would have run it over. Now, it might seem like a rose bush to most people, but my oldest son gave it to my wife for Mother's Day one year. If you go by my house right now, half of it looks like somebody shaved it off because everybody cuts that corner. They knocked the fences down at Morgansville Road and Hurst Lane. And one guy I talked to, I said, what are you doing? He said, well, the GPS says I can come down here. I said, well, the GPS doesn't say you can run my rose bush over. And, you know, I wound up getting him out of there. But, you know, about a month ago, somebody put up a sign, a no truck sign for traffic heading on to Village Mill Drive heading north, right next to that rose bush I was talking about. Guess what? Within a week, well, within the last week, somebody came around a corner and knocked it over. Somebody came by and picked it back up and put it back in the ground. But I'm wondering, is it possible to get something like a no truck sign at the end of Hurst Lane where somebody turning off of Morgansville Road would see it? And it might say local traffic only because the folks that are in that warehouse across the street have options once a month and people come to pick up ice machines and kitchen supplies. So like a sign that says no big trucks, level of traffic only would be wonderful because honestly, I'm retiring soon. My wife is retiring soon. Our income's going to be limited and I'm not, you know, insurance policies have, you know, Matt, you have to pay first before they do anything, and it's not going to cover any of the times I put those split rail fences back up. So anyway, that if you drive down the road in Washington County, you got to weave around the manhole covers that are two or three inches lower than the rest of the pavement. When did they quit like grading it down around the manhole covers? Because nowadays, if you're on a motorcycle or a bicycle, that's dangerous. Then if a cop's following you down the road, he's probably going to pull you over because he thinks you're drunk because everybody weaves around them. And the third thing was recycling. You know, the dump permit has a separate recycling thing. Why not roll recycling into everybody's dump permit? And maybe, you know, we can clean the county up a little bit. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all great ideas. What I can do for your first request is ask for our highways department and our engineering department to take that to the TAC committee, and they'll take a review of the area to see if any additional signage is warranted. As far as manholes, if you can maybe touch base with our Department of Engineering at the end of this meeting and tell us what rooms you're talking about, we can take a look at those individuals and see if they need any adjusting and recycling permit. I think that's a great idea. I'll definitely provide that information to our Director of Solid Waste.
Yeah, I've always bought the exit permit, but like I said, my wife and I are about a year or two away from retirement. Money's going to be a little tighter. In fact, to buy a dump permit, I buy a dump permit, but if I buy, you know, except for recycling permit might be optional when the tax gets getting a little tight, you know? Thank you, by the way, for all the good stuff that happens. Really hope you're okay.
Thank you, Robert.
I just wondering, is there something that can be done like a barrier, obstacle on the right of way that would impede them going into his yard?
That's something that we can take a look at at the TAC committee. I'm not sure if we install any types of barriers, but you know, would you be able to? Pardon?
I'll give a little bit of insight to what's going on with that. So the, the building material that she was talking about and he was talking about, they used to be located on this side of the railroad tracks. If you went straight down Morgans Avenue, you went straight into them. And that's what all the trucks used to do. They go straight in, come straight out. Well, then he decided to move on the other side of the tracks where the old elevator was. So now GPS has created a whole havoc, and we have seen nothing but trucks trying to weave through Morgans. Even if they just went straight down Morgansville Road and right over the railroad tracks and turned up that way, they could go straight in. But for some reason, GPS taking them the shortest route, they're weaving, they're trying to weave through Village Mill, which none of those intersections are now available by tractor trailer.
We'll take that to our TAC committee. Scott, can you address the barrier question?
Yeah, so a barrier has to be crash worthy. So there's a clear zone, it's called. So you have to be able to recover when you're driving down the road. You have to have certain shoulder width. So all that needs to be looked at. There's some options potentially, but they have to be crash worthy barriers and things like that. But as Michelle said, we'll take it to the TAC committee. I'll get your name and number one with some of these other details that fall.
The TAC committee is called the Transportation Advisory Committee, and we review questions like this.
It involves state highway is there, the police are there, engineering, other state highway officials and engineering. So we all talk about these larger matters. GPS has come up with truck traffic in different areas and how we can address that with signage and even trying to connect with these other companies on GPS. This is trying to reroute and so all those things will be evaluated and we'll talk to you about that as we go, but we'll get back with you. Your name here, talk through this.
Okay, Jack Finnick.
We really appreciate you guys coming here once a year. And the reason we have a nice crowd is Marty puts the hammer down on us. Anyway, my question, Pennsylvania Avenue and Morgans Avenue is, can be a nightmare over there sometimes. Now with the new Wawa, how's that going to affect traffic? We have T-Mobile there on the corner. So I don't know. That's just, it's hard getting out of CVS on the Pennsylvania Avenue. So I can't imagine what it's going to be like now with, with Wawa right across the street.
So with the Wawa traffic, the state has Pennsylvania Avenue and that county has with our, with our Long Meadow Road. So it's again a combination of how is that looked at with the state compared to the county at the entrances? So all that was in the plan review was looked at. But I'll get with you about some of the details of all with where that traffic goes and how that's going to be accounted for, different peak hours and things like that that we deal with the traffic. All right.
Okay, that concludes the signup list, but I'm going to open it up to the floor. Anyone else want to? Marty?
Just a quick question. Morgansville in general, in the community, any big plans for construction or new business or anything like that? Computer place out here, state, state, state library, any clue what's going to happen there or?
Thank you. Yeah, so of course.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so of course a lot of this business stuff ends up under non-disclosure agreements. So I can, I can tell you some things and some not. The Citibank buildings, which is I think what you were asking about, uh, they were purchased by, uh, Don Bowman's son, Todd Bowman. Um, and he has, uh, put some construction money into one of the buildings already. Uh, he's preparing it basically for spec industrial use. Um, because that's what interest they see high interest in. So they're basically developers who are trying to get their money back. He's looking for the lowest and greatest use of it. But there are three buildings on that property. So, um, they have plans. We've discussed different types of plans with, uh, Todd Bowman. And again, we can only really encourage them to do different things. Um, because he lives and dies by the zoning that is on that property. So, um, there are certain things that he's principally allowed to do on there and some things he's not. And so if there's anything that occurs on that property outside of zoning, you as citizens have the opportunity to come into a public forum and oppose or support that. So anything outside of basically what it's known for currently can require public uh, when they enact that use. And so that's those properties. Um, really the most exciting things I can usually talk about are retail or some sort of amenities that, uh, the citizens can use. So I brought a couple of notes that I thought you'd be kind of interested in that we're allowed to share. Um, there's a really interesting, is anybody familiar with like Dave and Buster's? It's kind of a restaurant and games and hangout place. There's a, a concept called Stratosphere Social. Um, it's very similar to a Dave and Buster's and it requires a very high level of upfront investment by the developer. It's basically bringing in amenity to Washington County for the citizens. Um, we don't necessarily always meet the parameters for a lot of these amenities. It'd be like, when I first took this job, everybody wanted a Trader Joe's or a Wegmans. And we're very, very far unfortunately away from meeting those types of parameters for those companies. But we're getting very close to some of the really cool ones. Stratosphere Social is the start of, I think, something really cool coming our way. Um, so it is gonna be out on our net drive as well. So basically off of Sharpspur Pike. And, uh, it'll be opening this summer, but they're developing it right now. So, um, another very exciting thing that's maybe not particularly for this community, but Itachi Rail located here a couple of years ago to, um, build, uh, Metro Cars. And that is a very, very impactful site selection process. So they looked all over the world, all over the United States. And that's what basically my department does is we go fight for the county and sell the county and market the county. That's what we're always out doing. And we were very lucky to win that site selection there to have Itachi Rail here. Who will be employing 465 relatively decently paying starting wage jobs in the manufacturing industry. Um, both for, we see now in 2026 while they're ramping up their production. But the exciting part is Itachi Rail came back to us about five months ago and said, listen, we had such a great experience in Washington County and we like your community so much that our executives in Japan and Italy have identified this location as the worldwide strategic sales. So Itachi Rail not only makes rail cars, they're into some very, very cool technology like holograms. Itachi is developing a process where you could walk up to a pedestal and you'll be able to talk to your relatives in real time, looking right at their face as a hologram. It's life size and it's super crazy cool. I've seen it in action. Things like that, laser signaling for trains, all kinds of really neat technologies they're working on. And they're building an expansion on the front of their manufacturing plant, literally less than two years after they built the whole plant. They're expanding it right now. It's gonna be their international sales location. So the executives that are trying to sell this technology to companies, when they need to meet with these people to demonstrate something, they're coming to Hagerstown to do that. And that can be coming from all over the world. So that's super exciting. And the county, and thank to my counterparts and staff at the county, uh, part of this, uh, expansion location requirement was that they could get it done in five months. And, uh, they are going to have it finished in five months. And that is only to the, to the, of, of my staff currently. That is at the end of Halfway Boulevard. Do you know where FedEx Ground is? The big one, right there. And the county is actually extending Halfway Boulevard out and it's gonna connect to Green Castle Pike. So that's gonna be a nice intersection, a connection for citizens to use. Very, very cool. Um, we're working on a dual drive through our rich location called Seven Brew. Um, it's gonna be in front of the old Kmart. Next to the Red Rock and Big Sky. And, uh, I don't know much about it because I don't drink coffee, but my wife is very excited. Uh, because they sell, I think, eight thousand drinks combinations or something. And it's a dual drive through and that's all it is. It's, you don't go inside. It's just for drinks. Well, kinds of slushies and things I looked at. That's called Seven Brew. So that one's very exciting. Um, of course you guys know about the Maryland Wine House. I wasn't excited at first about a new liquor store, but then when I found out that it's gonna go forty-two full-time people. Then I got it because that's what I do for the county to get tops. And we'll be able to work this year, a whole time out of that liquor store. I don't, that's, you know, if they moved the liquor store over to bar, I'm happy. I'm just worried about the town too. Um, um, you guys saw the Dunkin' Donuts on Emerald Point, which is at Mark Pike, Lone Bird Pike. That one's open already. Um, that's a new concept of, of Dunkin' Donuts. It's like a, it's like a to-go hyperstore. And a lot of people are using the app to order their Dunkin' Donuts now. So you just use your phone and you cruise through this thing and, and you're not even slowed down in the morning. They're actually making, they're putting another one um, in front of the CSO Plasma place on the end of Wilson where it connects to Frederick. And it's gonna be almost the same size as that, just kind of a real quick drive through thing, a whole lot of inside. There's just parking spots for pickup basically. So Dunkin's are doing really well. Um, you know, commercial and industrial, I'll touch on that for you guys, the warehouses are always office brands like this, Scott. I talked to you long there. Um, so warehouses in this community, obviously what happened was, you know, consumer had to change to e-commerce. That happened at the beginning of COVID. That caused the private industry to scramble to have enough warehouse space to serve all the trucks that come to our doors and drop off everything we want everywhere. We had a glut of warehouse development. It was what I would honestly say, working in economic development was probably a case study for the entire country. There are only so many communities in the country that have an eighty-one and seventy connection of that kind of caliber. Um, and you start thinking to the east of us, ninety-five's too expensive. So eighty-one is the most important east coast, north and south corridor. Um, and so, yes, we had a lot of developers come here and they dropped a lot of money in this community. And that money does save us all taxes. We need a new ambulance. That helps buy our ambulance. When we need a new road or a connection or a traffic circle like Scott was talking to, we don't let these people build buildings without improving the road or the sewer system or the water system. So you wanna big, build a big building here and make some money on this community? Well, you're gonna make an investment in our industry. And that is something that you're seeing here on Morgans Avenue with Charlie Drive and Label Lane. That would have been a warehouse a long time ago if we weren't requiring the developer to fix all the it's expensive. And that, it's a lot of false advertising that comes in our tax there. If we put that one for the um, and just to give you an update, uh, there's two empty warehouses in Washington County right now, completely empty. Yes, some that have some space left in them and there's various vacancies that come and go. But there are only two buildings in Washington County that are completely empty. Is the one on Red Road in sixty-three South and there's one behind Sheets at newest Crossroads. And that building has some problems, some structural problems that are the problem of the developer. And they already spent about seventy million dollars on that building. So I can guarantee you they'll fix it and figure it out eventually because they want their money back. Um, and the one down on Red Road unfortunately has a weird entrance with a train tracks that we're trying to convince somebody um, that they don't wanna make their truckers make a hard turn out here. So that one's just a difficult. But other than that, every warehouse you see has something. It may be partial and we may be wanting all the little piece leftover, but it's, it's being used. And I can rest assured completely to tell you that all of these people are paying their taxes. And they're paying their taxes whether they're empty or full or not. Now, my department wants to see them full of active, full-time jobs where people can provide for their family. And we're working toward that, but just rest assured they're paying all their taxes. They're buying our police cars and our ambulances and our fire trucks. And they're keeping that tax burden, all of, all of us, because I'm a citizen here too. And if there's any direct questions about specific property, I'd have you to talk to you guys afterwards. They'll get me here eventually if I keep talking.
While you're talking about businesses, so is it anything about Friday's closing?
I actually just learned about that myself in the paper.
Something today where they had a sign that they were closed.
They are closed. They are closed. But I can tell you that that business has been struggling for the concept is yeah, famously. Let's backfill it with something we all like. That's important. Any other direct questions? No, let's not put us to the oh, well, Buc-E's, I, I was, I was gonna run out the door if nobody mentioned it, so, um, let me just ask for everybody's assistance on that one. Um, since our department works with this company is mostly under non-disclosure agreements because the big companies will be very worried about their workers. So Buc-E's, you know, maybe not a perfect example, but they don't want everybody to know that they're looking here. But if Buc-E's says, what if there's another Buc-E's and somebody might lose their job or might move here, it might change their workforce. So we generally are under non-disclosure agreements. Now, that's been completely blown out of the water by whatever Facebook news agency that was that put that article out. But if you read that article closely, there's no detail there. They're just making random, high-level suggestions that I think most of you could probably make too, maybe even better. Um, so I will say that we are working with Buc-E's. They had booked in Chambers Park and did not like the area and they like Washington County. So we're working with them. Can't tell you a whole lot about it. Uh, again, Buc-E's would be a, a success for me. I might have to drop the mic and go hunt if we get above it. Because that's, that's a big one. Um, and, but I have high confidence in it. We have some parcels under evaluation by Buc-E's. Uh, but if you guys can help me and just squash the rumors, they, they are not coming to the outlets or any of that stuff. Um, they're looking at different properties, um, that I won't disclose, but, um, nothing yet. But if not, scare Buc-E's police. Let's keep looking here because they do like the community. Thank you for the question. Anything else?
Okay. I think we have another question up here.
This new Morgansville school, I know it's since two thousand eight, but it's become a traffic problem when cars come in and drop their kids off. Back, I didn't know if there was any ideas of a light there. Um, because Morgans Avenue is a thoroughbred, have six hundred kids there where we used to have two hundred and fifty kids. And a lot of them are, uh, passenger kids, sending their kids, you drop them off. And it's a tie-up at eight thirty between eight thirty and four after nine. Almost can't get through Morgans Avenue.
Can I get your name? Can I get your name?
Rob Michael.
Um, I believe we talked about this topic. This topic was brought up once before and we really appreciate your concerns and comments. Um, Scott Hobbs, who is right in front of you, our director of engineering, he will reach out to, um, public schools and, and talk about, um, the traffic going on there, um, and any, uh, additional analysis that is needed on the area.
Okay, anyone else?
Marty, um, I live on Paradise Church Road and, um, my wife lives with me. She lives there too. I'll address this again. We live on Paradise Church Road. And where it intersects with Long Meadow Road, it gets kind of dicey sometimes trying to get out of there. Early in the morning, late afternoon. Um, my understanding was when the Hart Farm back the road about a mile, uh, developed years ago, that when the fifteenth house was built, that the road from there to Long Meadow Road would have to be widened or a light there at the intersection with Long Meadow Road is, am I dreaming that or is that what really was agreed upon or?
We're in the process. We're in the process of design for a traffic signal at Paradise Church. And Long Meadow Road. Where right now we're looking about two years out of the CIC as long metal road improvements and that's the first phase of our improvements. So I'm hoping in two summers we'll have a signal there.
One other thing that I'll say now. I didn't put the hammer down trying to get people here because approximately years ago, I tried to have forty to fifty people in refreshments. Don't forget the refreshment. But, uh, one person who has never come to the, one of these meetings, I guess, is, is my brother-in-law and sister-in-law, Curtis Kaufman. Curtis is developing a, um, what is that? An antique law.
Oh, yes.
Across somewhere Wawa will be. And, uh, it's gonna be called Route eleven Antique Law. So it's, it's first class. If you ever get a chance, I think you did talk to John or somebody. So I know he's thankful for whatever help you, you rendered. But it's good to see Curtis here and be lucky with your business.
Yes. Mayor Bob?
I'm a recognized and distinguished folks in the crowds. I'm, I'm the face of Morgansville gravy. I couldn't do it without well, the main degree.
Oh, wow. So now we know the truth. Bob, Bob's been taking credit every Saturday morning for as long as I can remember. So now we know the truth. Anyone else?
There's a building next to Sheets on Pennsylvania Avenue. It probably needs that built about seven years ago. There's never been anything and it's, you know where it is, what it means.
Jonathan knows all about that building.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, that's a, that's a problem. Um, there's, I can explain it to you. There's not much we can do about it. That building was built as a speculative, uh, urgent care. Um, and the urgent, and right now Wellspan is it? Uh, and they're paying no, they don't, I'm sorry, they're the tenant. Wellspan was supposed to open an urgent care in there. And I think you and I opened first.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and beat them to the punch and they decided that it was gonna be splitting hairs for patients. So they were literally paying their monthly lease for the next, uh, I checked about a year ago, it was six years. So you got about five years left. Now, I've been in contact with the building owner and he will pay one dollar more per monthly lease. So if I can find a business that will pay one more dollar than that urgent care. You've got all the good ideas, yes. Hi, that is me. Um, well, if I can find a business that will pay one more dollar than that urgent care is paying. The problem is I know what that figure is and unfortunately urgent cares pay a lot of money for those units. And to find another business that will go in there and pay that much money has proven to be a very big challenge for me. So to put another urgent care in there, nobody wants, it's too close. So unfortunately, I'm, unless I can break through the ice on that, it's probably gonna sit there because the owner's getting his penis.
There's all those people, you know?
Yeah, I know. If, if you see anything breach in the building or there's a block or a problem there, you can call and file complaint with Jill's office. And they'll send an inspector to watch because it still needs to be kept. The owner has to know, the shit-sucking has to be in place. It cannot be in ice. But if you notice that, please make a report to them. Honestly, our inspectors
Did you feel that boss that just went right over that?
Our inspectors, we rely on you quite frankly. We don't have ideas at all. We, we actually ask that you make those reports.
Larry's here tonight. Okay, last call. One more. Again, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Uh, please be safe going home and, uh, motion for adjournment.
She's gotta do some sound comments.
Yeah. I'm sorry, that's right. We, we do have
I'm sorry, I have a couple of housekeeping items for you here this evening. Um, good evening from Don Marcus, the county clerk. On behalf of the Washington County Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, I am requesting a motion to appoint Mike Tesla to serve a first full three-year term from February the first of twenty twenty-five through January the first of twenty twenty-eight. This is not a A board.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor by saying aye. You cue four oh.
And also on behalf of the Washington County Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, I'm requesting a motion to appoint Lori Sines to serve a first full three-year term from February first of twenty twenty-five through January thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second for approval? All in favor by saying aye. Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you.
And the last item, on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, I'm requesting a motion to accept the recommendation to reappoint Susan Taylor.
Susan Taylor to serve a second three-year term from February first of twenty twenty-five through January thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight. This is not a A board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval. All in favor by saying aye. Pose, same sign, four oh.
Thank you. That's all that I have.
Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you again for this evening and we have a motion for adjournment.